You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 3 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming and it's 5:30. We'll get started. Welcome to the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting to address concerns regarding parking on...we've met once before. We had a nice discussion and we wanted to get back together again to see how we can bring this to a closure where people park properly and if there are some narrow streets, how can we handle it with one-way streets? That's the reason why I asked a city engineer, Mr. Warner, to be here and thank you very much, Mr. Warner, for coming and Mrs. Smith for coming. So there were several issues that were brought up at that time. Some related to parking in the grass, parking in walkways. Safety concerns were expressed because of parking on the walkway, especially when kids are in the neighborhood that was affecting their safety. So that's the reason why we are all gathered here to address this. So what I feel is that there's...I don't think we need to have another ordinance or anything like that. I think we have ordinances on the books. It is about enforcing the ordinances and doing it in a way which is not punitive, but at least initially our approach should be to educate the habitual offenders, but at the same time make some structural changes like making some streets, one-way streets and things like that, that way there is enough space available for vehicles to go through. And also in areas where they don't have enough space to park, what should we do before we enforce these ordinances? I think that's where the discussion was when we last left. With that, I'm going to open it up. Let's have Chief Marty Carley begin the discussion.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. I have passed around a report from Corporal Wright who was here, Command of our Traffic Division, of some numbers of...he gave our calls for service and, you know, total case reports we've been brought, so some of the initiatives that we've taken towards addressing these issues that we talked about here. Also, besides this enforcement here, we also did a press release on some public education reference ordinance. If you read the remarks, we might be preparing for civil war, but it is... Also, in our radio show today, I invited those who had concerns either way to come to the meeting tonight. So I don't know if you listen to my radio show or just concerned, but as you can see, I can see that the people on Facebook are not here tonight. But here's our report based on some of the things we have done to, you know, help alleviate the problem or I guess enforce, you know, the ordinances that are on book, on the books here and there and being reasonable about it. I am in, you know, I agree with Dr. Corrigan, has spoken to the mayor somewhat about this issue a little bit and I think, you know, just all-out enforcement without really taking consideration of, you know, streets and so forth, I think is counterproductive, but that is us, but we will continue to plod along and, you know, enforce what we can and, you know, reasonably. Any questions on myself or Corporal Wright?
Could you explain some of the objections that...I didn't see any objections.
Oh, I mean, they're still there.
I'm trying to get it.
Yeah, if you go and read them, I mean, just people are just like, you know, they can park where they want to, you know what I'm saying? People are complaining about they don't want their cars hit or getting hit by cars coming down the street, especially when it's talking about the greenway and parking in their front yard. It's their property, they can do what they want. You come on my property, I trust that's in signs. I mean, some of it are just people just, you know, basically giving their concerns and some of our people are just radically just basically saying, "In someone's word, you come on my property, you're going to fight." So it goes way, all the way down from, you know, people, you know, "Where else am I parked? I don't have a driveway," you know, those things, to my car possibly getting hit, to "You don't take my taxes, you don't take my mortgage, you can't come on my property." So those are some of the objections on Facebook. We can't get this Facebook. I'm not saying that, you know, that is how we should, I don't know how we govern, but I'm just, you know, saying that though, you know, those people, people voice their opinions on Facebook also, you know, when they don't come to meetings and those are some things that, you know, we have to deal with also.
I saw some, I just found it.
Chief, these parking problems listed here, May, June and July, does 23 self-initiated, 24, 84 self...what is the difference between the 107 and July and 84 being self-initiated? Maybe Brian?
Yeah, so what I did, looking up our calls for service, I'm actually able to see if it was called in by someone from the public or if it's something that we as the police department went and did ourselves, which is the self-initiation. So the self-initiated calls are the ones that we ourselves have actually seen and addressed ourselves.
Thank you. That's kind of what I thought. Is there any particular neighborhood that is happening in more than any other or is it just pretty much random throughout the city?
I'd say, well, so when I started in, what month was it, July, I started working just north of Michigan Boulevard, so that's where I saw a lot of them. However, then, you know, after speaking with you actually about some on over in Edgewood going around, I mean, it's honestly, it's everywhere. It's just having to address it is the thing.
I did get an email from a councilman, Tracy Tillman, I think probably she could have received that email. And she was, she couldn't be here tonight, but she talked about maybe having some one-way streets. Do you think, are there any streets that are narrow that we need to make it one-way?
It sounds like her email too, that you all made Jackson Street one-way. Was that just recent or was that...I mean, I'm sorry, not one-way, but there's a parking only on one side. Is that recently? So she made, she gave that as an example of something that seems to, you know, could help alleviate some of the problems of parking on sidewalks by making it one side, no parking, which I think, you know, if you, I guess if we're really going to do anything besides widening streets, which probably not feasible at this time or ever because of the way the house or whatever, but I think if anything we could do to kind of help with the narrow streets would be the only part on this side is true, which again, I think we'll take another, it's going to take some time, you know, that's, you know, time of education, it's time for people, you know, kind of understand that or something, but I think if anything that will be a solid, a way to solve the problem issue without too many problems.
I do know down in our neighborhood, there's a few streets marked with that, parking on, no parking on the north side of the streets and it's still happening.
Yeah, Gardena Street, but I know it doesn't happen on Gardena Street because I control Gardena.
Yeah, this issue is not going to start in my neighborhood if I can help it.
And, you know, I called the chief, I've sent him emails, photos and stuff like that and it gets corrected. Yeah, I mean, all people have to do is know what's right and wrong and I think it kind of solves the problem. I know that Mayor Mary's law and do sweeps throughout the community and I, you know, I, I think it helped a little bit, especially with vehicles parked in the yards and stuff like that. And yeah, there are some streets that it occurs on, so let me give you an example. Because last time we had this meeting was back in July, middle of July is when we met. And I think I brought up Hendrick Street as being the street where I noticed a lot of vehicles always parked on the sidewalk and they've been parked there for years and in the yards. So this evening I said, "Well, you know, I'm going to take a ride down Hendrick Street and see if there's been any improvement in the last three months on that street." So, and this is just from, you know, a half hour ago. Vehicle in Hendrick Street is only four blocks long, right? So we had 10 vehicles parked in the yards, not parked on driveways, but parked in the yards. And on the sidewalk, there was a total of seven vehicles that were parked on the sidewalk. And I'm not just saying a foot, I'm saying they're taking up half, half of the sidewalk. So in that particular neighborhood, you know, even if they would park on each side of the street, on the street, you still have enough room for a vehicle to get through there. You know, snowplop, you know, I don't know, and I'm glad for here tonight, Sean, to address the issue because I don't know what happens in neighborhoods in the wintertime, but I just think it's a little education. And I know, Chief, you put that in a paper and that was good because I saw that and I read the whole ordinance. So, and I don't know how many people get to, get the paper and how many people really paid attention, you know, to the article depending on what they look for in the newspaper day-to-day. But I think for educational purposes, so that everybody in the, not everybody, but the majority of the people in the city would be made aware of it, that a notice goes out in the water bills explaining the whole ordinance and how the police and what the city is doing to alleviate this problem, but this is what the ordinance says and put a date on there where we want to start enforcing it, you know, if it's two months down or three months down depending on, you know, your manning here in the police department and what we can do and the manning and code enforcement, because the way I understand is parking on the sidewalks deal with the police department, parking in the yards deals with code enforcement, correct? Yeah, so we got two different departments dealing with this. And I know code enforcement doesn't have 50 people to go out every day and look for cars in yards, but at least the public would be educated and we've done our best to try to educate people and once enforcement starts, then the enforcement starts. And if it starts by getting a warning ticket put on the vehicle or a notice put on, you know, the house and, you know, if it doesn't get corrected, then you're going to get a ticket, you know? And I kind of use this for an example, you know, the city of Chicago, if you live in a neighborhood over there, right? You only have curb and sidewalk here, curb and sidewalk there, and when you go up and down, you look at, you don't see cars parked in yards because here's where you live, here's your two parking spaces and kind of, you know, deal with it. And I'm not saying that, you know, we have to have that kind of attitude, but we have to enforce something, otherwise it just keeps getting worse and worse. And we're trying to make our city look better. To me, it's all about, you know, the perception people get right into neighborhoods. Do I want to live in this neighborhood or don't I want to live in this neighborhood? And that's what I have to say at this point in time as far as how to attack the issue.
I was going to ask the chief, are there, in these various infractions, are there some egregious ones which maybe we can address some of them which are really egregious rather than, and then gradually enforce it?
Oh, you, you're up to it more than me. There's something more to... I mean, really with the junk vehicles and stuff like that, there's no fine associated with them. If it's on private property, our ordinance is actually very lenient as far as other places. We give people 20 days to correct their issue with their vehicle, whatever it is. And then after that 20 days, between day 17 to day 20 of that 20 day, we go back and issue another three days, saying you have three more days, which that's more in line with what the state statute does, is giving you that 72 hours to fix whatever the issue is, whether it's an expired license plate, a flat tire, no wheel, whatever it may be that makes that vehicle fall under the junk or abandoned vehicle notice or ordinance, excuse me, that's where then we would still do that. There's still no fine associated with that. The fine comes in then once that notice expires, that 20 day and that 72, the 72 can be used on public streets, but then that's where the fine would be is once your vehicle is towed, which at that point it's roughly $200 for the tow plus $30, I believe, per day for storage. So that's where a lot of the issues come with some of the people with the vehicles I've towed is they call me complaining because of not the issue, but how egregious their fees have become with their vehicles. Sometimes the tow fee and storage outweighs the value of their entire vehicle at that point. Now, on the parking ticket aspect of it, you know, for people that are parked left of center, we, there is a state statute for that, so we can write a warning for it. Normally when I was going around with my junk vehicle, stuff I would, if I did see somebody that was parked on the roadside, I would have to leave a warning on their vehicle for that, so we can't do that, but you can do with the parking ticket for that as well. So there's different options we can do.
Say, for these junk vehicles, hundreds of junk vehicles, how often do people remove it and how often do you have the ticket then?
With the ones that I actually did put the notices on, especially the 20 days, I was actually very impressed with the amount of people that did correct the issue. There was a lot that I would go back to and they would be gone. Some of them, however, weren't, some of them did get towed. I can, I had a lot of complaints on it, you know, calling, basically kind of what Facebook says right now, "Why are you coming on my property? It's my property, you don't touch my stuff." I know you guys run into that frequently as well, but again, it's just, you know, kind of with the whole education aspect, explaining to them what the city ordinance is, why are there, what, where their vehicle falls at under the junk vehicle aspect or if their vehicle hasn't moved in 72 hours, mainly educating them about that. So that's kind of the important part there.
Do they park in a way that interferes with the activity of the fire trucks or an ambulance coming there for their own safety and well-being? Does it affect their own safety and well-being?
Most streets, I would say, not necessarily, but again, if we hit some of the streets here off of Michigan Boulevard, you know, such as Hendricks and going out, you know, all the way down to Woodland, some of those streets do get narrow and if the people that live on those streets did not park on the sidewalk, I would be tempted to try driving a fire truck up that street or ambulance waiting for that man or something, yeah, to even see if it would fit, because I have a feeling if they actually are where they're supposed to, an emergency vehicle of that size would not fit, which is why they park on sidewalks.
So you have a snowplow on the streets? Not necessarily. During the winter months, it does get tired, but we have a snow ordinance that we have in place, phase one, phase two is basically evening, no parking on the evening side, odd days, no parking on odd days. Enforcement, I think we got a good relationship with PD. If you have an issue, we contact the police department, they come out and try to get through there. I think it is possible that we might need to look into maybe taking inventory of our roadways and determine which ones are too narrow for passage and then maybe look at options like no parking this side or no parking anyway and paying yellow curbs, what the case may be.
Yes?
Yeah, Dr. Corrigan, I'm sorry, everybody, I'm going to have to leave due to a previous commitment.
No problem.
Don't want people to think I'm not interested, but there were two things I wanted to talk about. One is the one-way streets and I do hope we don't have to go to that extreme because that can be very confusing for new and elderly drivers because they think they're going some way somewhere and it doesn't work and then it can just really throw them, you know, really off as far as their plans to get to their destination.
What about parking on one side of the street?
I think parking on one side is a great, you know, halfway measure for that.
Especially if the speed is narrow and if an ambulance cannot boot, that's a safety issue.
I agree with that, that would be fine. The other thing is people are parking on their yards, okay? So can we look at them actually establishing a parking pad on their property there? And I don't know, you know, regulation-wise, what would be allowed, you know, if it could be wood chips, if it could be stone, if it could be asphalt, if it could be concrete, you know, because they're using it for parking anyhow, you know? So that seems like the most logical solution to this whole issue. If they want to be parking in their yard, then they should be allowed to do that, but give them a way to be able to do that legally. So it's an impervious material, is that it?
Yes.
Asphalt or concrete?
It's got to be asphalt or concrete.
Okay, asphalt or concrete.
I've found several residents since I've been here, a city engineer, that had been parking in the yard, the front, and I go and look at the site and there's plenty of room in their rear yard, up an alley for them to park.
Oh, okay.
That's an issue. We have, most of our neighborhoods have alleys and they all have access to the rear yards and that's where their parking should be and not in the middle of their front yard.
I do know in the neighborhood where I and Joe live, we have no alleys and people a lot of the time are parking in their front yard. It just seems to be a practice now, so I don't want to mention where we live, but there's, you know, it's like there's a habit, it's a habit, you know?
I mean, as it looks out to Cool Spring, they have alleys in the area.
Yeah, right.
I know if there's an issue there, yeah, those houses all have driveway garages.
Garage, right. I'd like to support the idea of the parking on one side of the street for a couple reasons. It's in existence already, so nobody could squawk about something new that's being introduced. You know, you can point to existing examples like Jackson or wherever that street is over here. And we would also solve the problem of any emergency vehicle getting through because they were, that vehicle would have, you know, three-quarters of the street to use and that's a perfect rationale for why that should become, you know, a law or a code.
So can you suspect take an inventory of the streets and see which ones are narrow where we need to implement parking on one side?
Yes, I'd take...
For their safety and well-being, that for emergency vehicles can go through.
Yes, I'd take them too. I also work with engineered water and as well as traffic management, right, as well. So, yeah, should be an issue.
And so if we were to send some letters with the water bills around, well, I think we should be mentioning about that we're in the process of taking inventory so that we will have some streets identified where we'll be parking on one side so that emergency vehicles can go through and then encouraging them to use, if there is alleys available to use, the alleys to park their cars instead of their parking on the grass and walkways in the front. I think, I probably should start with an educational process and then gradually raise their awareness.
Yes?
Can I, Dr. Corrigan? Yes, I was going to, you know, I think we all agree, years of no enforcement has led to where we are today and it's going to be hard to change people's behavior because it gets entrenched. People see that guy's been parked there, I can park there. So communication, education is going to be a big part of this and not just for this. The city's about to implement new refuse laws, new fines and fees. Education and communication is a big component for all this, I think. And it's difficult, you have a fragmented media thing nowadays, not everybody watches the news, not everybody reads Dispatch, not everybody listens to VFM. I would suggest just one of the best communicated things we do is the spring and the fall cleanup. So perhaps coinciding with those, that advertising for spring and fall cleanup, we can say, "Hey, new parking regulations." We can introduce this to people in that way. The water bill doesn't go to tenants, for example, and as we all know, they're probably more problematic than the landlord in those properties. So so much of this is about the communication and we have years of bad behaviors that is going to be difficult to fix, but once we start parrying that, we'll see improvements and then it gets easier, I think. The one-sided parking is probably a great solution once we find out the narrow streets. Like, Tim, what's a street that's wide, what's the dimension of a street that's wide enough for two-sided parking?
That's what they're going to ask as part of what our ordinance is. For my personal designs and things that I've done in the past, we get, if you're going to have parking on one side of the street, you should have a 30-foot wide pavement, an eight-foot parking lane and two 11-foot through lanes in each direction. If you have narrow pavement, then that would have to go to one way if you're going to park on one side.
So do we have streets that are less than 30 feet?
I would imagine we have lots of streets that are less than 30 feet wide. Do you know, should I have, I mean, it's a ordinance is for new subdivisions for minimum foot?
And they're not consistent throughout the city?
Yeah, I know, but I mean, for like the new subdivision that have been going in, like Metal Bridge and that, have we had 12-foot lanes or 30-foot?
Even Mayfield was...
Yeah, I know, that was...
That was previous.
Yeah, but yeah, minimum, I would recommend is a 12-foot through lanes and then an eight-foot parking lane, minimum.
You know, I feel that in this communication, I agree with you, not many people read News Dispatch anymore. And so we need to, we use multiple different sources, you know, it could be newspapers, social media, it could be radio, water, everything, whatever mechanisms we have available, we should use all of them. And I think one of the areas I think we should focus on is at the beginning of the conversation, we should say that if you want to beautify the city, it will improve your property values, it will be good for everybody and these are the things we are planning to gradually implement that way. It will be, it will improve safety, it will improve, you know, it will make the city look beautiful, your property values are going to go up and it will be good for the city in general. I think in a way, I think we should persuade that this is in the best interest for everybody.
You always have to, when you're trying to sell somebody, you always have to tell them what's in, why is it their interest?
In their best interest.
Let's send it for them.
Yeah, yes.
To go along with what you're saying, you know, sidewalks are not made to park on. We all know that. And how much, Tim, are we investing this year in sidewalks? 400,000?
Just under 400,000.
Yeah, close to half a million dollars in sidewalk work and, you know, sidewalks are made for people to walk on, for people to, you know, mothers, fathers, take, push strollers up and down, for kids to walk on, to go to school on, to run around the neighborhood, to ride their bikes on, for adults to use, to ride their bikes on, not for people to park their cars on. And people can debate, they can debate with me all they want, but as long as there is enough room, you know, to park your vehicle on that, on that street and there's enough room, that there's two-sided parking, you know, that there's one lane to get through, that's how these streets were made. These streets were made, Hendrick Street was put in, what, 100 years ago?
Yeah, more.
And there was always plenty of room. And cars back then, so even bigger than they are now, I think people are just taking advantage of not being enforced and say, "Well, I'm going to drive on the sidewalk, park on the sidewalk because I don't want my side mirror getting knocked off." Well, you know, anybody can say that, but that's not the case here. The case is the sidewalks are made for people to use, people park in the streets and if there's a special exception, okay, well then they can work with the police department on whatever the police department and let them make the decision whether, you know, this is a special exception or not. And getting back to what Tim was saying, where people take advantage of the city is there's one situation that I know and I passed it tonight coming out here, that the gentleman parks two cars in the front of his house, okay? And you go down the alley, he's got a two-car garage and he's got like a parking area for three more vehicles behind his house, but he wants to park in front of his house, so that's where he parks. And it's on a city right-of-way, you know, the greenway. And he's been doing it for years and... And he's been doing it for years and, you know, I don't know why, but I think now is the time where we gotta bring this to a, you know, an end and, you know, and do it in a nice, friendly manner. I understand all that and because we don't want to have a big uprising over this, but, you know, sooner or later, you gotta say, you know, rules are rules and we got to enforce them and if we have to make exceptions, we'll make an exception here or there. But we're not, that's our responsibility is to run the city and to put these rules into place.
Where are we gonna make exceptions at? How you determine who you make exceptions for or not? Because some of these streets, when you talk about Helen and Edwards have been like that for years since I've been a little right, riding around and hasn't been an issue being, and I get it, I get it, it's an issue, but how are we making exceptions for them again? How do you tell the next person you make exceptions? Because these rest of the lot here, and talk about it now, but when you're out there issuing an article, it ain't that easy. It's not that easy. So again, if we sit here and say, there's never been enforcement, we haven't done enforcement, we haven't done, those are all false. We have done this years and years, it just happened, you know, there's still gonna be problems. You know, we're not gonna alleviate, no matter how much enforcement you do and I think we can alleviate, but I just want us to be kind of clear that it's not gonna be a, we gonna do this and it's gonna all go away or how we gonna make exceptions. I think, you know what I'm saying, we need to clear out, we need to clarify what's the exception and what's not because, you know what I'm saying, like, you know, all the burden at the end of the day is, you know what I'm saying, you know, it's not gonna be the people in this room, it's gonna be us doing like that. Men and women on the street, and I can tell you this, those are a type of commerce that cause bigger problems. So this is something for us to think about. So as we, as we do these things, I want us to keep that in mind also, you know?
Is there a way we, is there a way we can get data between, with a correlation between those streets that have heavy sidewalk parking and how often those sidewalks need to be repaired or replaced?
I'm sure there is, but we sure can't find that in the way that records have been kept from the city at this point. Going forward, sure, but going forward now if we don't have cars parking on the sidewalks. The sidewalk improvement program in the last few years of records, and I have found any sidewalk that's where driveway is, has been thickened to seven or eight inches thick just so cars drive over. In the past, it hasn't been the case. You can drive around and see where they added driveways later, the sidewalk is all broken up where the driveway is because people drove over because it's only forested concrete. So now and everything we're doing, if we come upon that, we're doing thicken sidewalk at the driveway locations.
Along with the communication and the reach out, and I might even suggest a direct mail campaign, cause contact, that postcards at the mass level, I think, are about 40 cents. We probably have about 15,000 residences in town, you know, as part of the, the reach out. But there's a new sheriff in town. Education, there's a new sheriff in town, a new day, a new day in Michigan City. Things are changing, you know, so if we, you know, kind of lean into it, like, like we know enforcement doesn't fix law breaking on its own. To change just behaviors takes years, takes time.
Well, thank you for volunteering to get these mail-in tickets.
I was thinking the council man.
That's why I was calling.
So you'd volunteer.
We don't have our.
It's on tape. I'm just a night-to-night guy. You guys are the.
I was thinking about one of those, those things that you see in Chicago. It's like a twat panel on a truck and they drive around and promote, I don't know, a play or something like that. And they can't be that.
We'll lecture about various methods.
Sorry.
What I was going to suggest was, I think we have taken all these suggestions. I think the focus will be on communication over the next six months. Let's focus on communication and, and see what these numbers look like and then maybe we can reconvene back again in six months and see how things turn out.
Well, what I, you don't like, Dr. Corr, what I would like to do, if you think it's a good idea, is when Tim gets the information put together as far as streets, you know, the width of streets, maybe which streets can be conveyed into parking on one side and things of that nature. That, you know, I don't know how long that would take, Tim, but, you know, and I know your business.
All the other things, you might not pray two or three years. If I worked with Sean, we'd get it a lot quicker.
Yeah, and if we could get it done quicker in six months, you know, we could get it done quicker.
We will try. And I thought, of course, that leads to.
We got some other suggestions. We need to reconvene and then we, you know, we keep this thing moving along.
So what I would suggest is, both of you can get together, come up with an inventory, make your suggestions and at that time you let me know that you're ready and that we'll reconvene.
Yeah, we'll shoot for early April, try to get this six months.
Don't you think we should do it before it starts smelling? I mean, is that impossible?
I'll link it up to them because they, they have, whenever you're ready, you let me know. Any other suggestions?
Well, I have a question. Yeah, as far as code enforcement goes and having cars, you know, in yards, is there anything that, you know, we can do to try to increase that?
In the past ten months.
Removed or?
So in the past 10 months, there have been 50 open and closed cases in regards to vehicles that are parked illegally, parked in yards and stuff like that. That doesn't include the, just like a one-day notice, which is the door doctor, you know, send them. That's got three different codes to it. One code is 1608 improper storage of recreational vehicles. The other one is 94207 driving parking prohibited in lawn and greenway. And the other one, 302.8, which is a motor vehicle or an incident state, state vehicles not running or is not licensed or a plate or stuff has to be removed from the yard. So I do put these on doors and stuff like that as an anchor for people that are in violation. Also like in the trusty old web tag. And I don't have my green one because of red tag, you know?
Catches their attention.
Catches their attention as well, as mine green and stuff. I mean, we're doing the best we can along with Ryan, you know, it's just, there's a lot out there and people like to move vehicles too, so they do have an RV shuffle around here. So there's an RV shuffle, a car shuffle in town here, like, it's just stupid. If we're yelling out in one house, they move the next neighborhood over and now we're starting over the process of a 20-day notice and stuff like that. I feel a 20-day notice is way too long.
Yeah, so would ours, I agree.
I think three days, get it out.
Does your general system have the parking code?
So a new system, hopefully we will. We're not even to that point yet. We're still working on permitting process of it and trying to get that going. It's supposed to, it's supposed to, every time you stop at a particular parcel or something, you're supposed to be able to document what you're there for, what the code violation is, print off whatever.
Hopefully we'll drop down so it's quick.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, that's the way we'll work. So we'll have a better understanding of how many violators are out there. Like, a lot of times we go over cases because usually it's, if it's a continual problem, like I go the next day and cars are, go the third day, that, put a case, put a case in this book and deal with it until we actually resolve it, resolve whatever they remove it to, you know, have help from the police department, whatever case may be.
One thing, Dr. Corr, I'll look into, for the last several years, when the states had the community crossing mansion ramp program.
Yes.
Every community's had to have their pavement asset management plan together. I do not know if that goes beyond the condition of the pavement and actually has the width of the roadways. It may have that information in, I'm not sure. I'll check with, I think Global Engineering has been doing that the last couple of years. So I'll check with Shadow and see what our asset management plan has in. If it's got the payment widths, I mean, that solves a long time, a lot of field matters. But I don't know if it does contain that data or not. After we're done, it will. But right now, it's probably just asphalt condition as far as, is it a terrible one or is it excellent tenant, somewhere between?
If it doesn't have that data, would it be helpful to reach out to engineering classes in the high school or IB Tech or PNW? Maybe they could help with the project?
We can think about doing that, yeah. I think right now, most of the work we'll do is probably grab what we can in the field but get a lot of it off Google Earth, just measure the width on the aerial photographs and say, yeah.
You know, and there's a couple of very notorious, highly visible places, like the corner house by Barker School that has four cars parked on their grass, even though they have a two-car garage and a driveway. So they could absorb four cars easily. But they're in a corner, so they don't have a curb parking available, though on Barker they do. But, you know, if we could get some visible improvement on the more notorious ones, you know, maybe that's a start. Think all the people go to Barker and see, well, this guy's parked with their neighbor. So get rid of those.
Yeah, and on that particular situation, we all know what it is, because we're all sitting here shaking our heads, is that maybe those cars, instead of parking up in the front yard, is there an easement in front of their yard that would go along Barker Road? When you're trying to park, you know, lane-wise, you know, if they wanted to do that instead of doing what they're doing, out parking up in their front yard, so I mean. I get a lot of complaints about that particular house.
Maybe there are some situations like, when I ask a question, are there some egregious ones like that that maybe selectively we can start addressing some of those that could probably help, help the process?
At least it gives you ammunition to say, for everybody else, see, we're doing it. It's not just here, it's everybody. My last tidbit, if I may, is that for the people who do get on VFM, I don't know, Chief Corr leaves everyone on VFM, but the mayor's off and on. Now, this is something that can be mentioned in those community corners. Everybody calls it the local, local thing as part of the, the reach out just to start to get the word out that we're gonna start, you know, enforcing parking, our parking code.
Any press release that we send out, VFM usually, VFM, WIMS, the locals, they usually have state. Put them on. I know VFM has their little, like you said, a tidbit, who does that, WIMS and, and then also their Facebook page, page also, it also gets put out too, so.
Chief, do you think we can be able to get this out as a press release that happens?
Yeah, Copa White will be able to get this out. No, we, we'll, Copa White and myself and tell the rest while we're working, getting something put together.
Well, once you put together, then you can share it with me and then maybe we need to create it.
So my question is, do we want one piece of material that would be used for the water bill, press release, or do we want some tweet differently or just whatever?
We'll come up with one and then we will use various variations, same, same repetition, yes.
Yeah, we'll make sure you all see it before we send it out.
I think that.
If it proves, see if there's something else that we're missing or if that one isn't fitting.
But I think my focus on that should be how it can benefit them. I think let's start with that. I think that, that will help.
Okay.
Very interesting.
Yes, got it.
My name is Dave Uterback. I've been resident of Sherwin Hills for going on 25 years and I don't know if it falls under the purview of necessarily parking problems, but it's kind of morphed into parking problems in that the community has a, has an increasing rate of golf carts throughout the community. And to the police officers at the meeting here, it's more common than not that the individuals driving the golf carts are average age of 12 or 13, necessarily. So what we're concerned about is, obviously, it's, it's probably illegal. Let's say so. There's a lot of them, this year probably increased threefold. And we're worried about accidents in the community, the kids driving their carts at night. And what we can do about it, okay, how, how we address the situation?
I mean, I'll take it back to the old adage of take some village to raise a child. I mean, if you, I mean, I would always say back in, you know, when I first started this job, you know, people called the police to tell their neighbor to turn on the music, you know what I'm saying? And really, I mean, you know, where I lived at growing up, we, our next door neighbor had to keep our house, so if we had problems, we talked and so I think we've gotten away from being neighbors and not talking to each other. So, I mean, if you have that ability to talk to your neighbors and people in the neighborhood and let them know that, what we can do is we can, again, put the education piece out there and do an enforcement part also. It's just, it's one of those things that usually when it happens, there's not a policeman around and then by the time we get there, they're home.
I didn't tell.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But, I mean, that is one thing I think that us as a community kind of do is we can get back to the, to the days when, you know, we can talk to our neighbors or people in our neighborhood, but hey, look, like, you know what I'm saying, like, that's probably not a smart idea for little Jimmy, little Johnny, wherever, to be driving his golf cart because A, it's illegal and B, like, you know, they could get yourself hurt. And then, you know, then kind of go from there to, but that, that's something that, you know, we have, you know, some of our officers have, you know, when I was looking for that. I know Copa White has, you know, made a purpose, a point at some point to kind of address those issues too. I can tell you this, we will, you know, we try to address a lot. There's like a wide variety of what we address, so sometimes we might miss, not miss things, but not have that focus for a while, but I mean, we try to address things differently. I mean, we have certain officers who, you know what I'm saying, like, they like, you know, they like looking for, you know, those type of problems. Then we got the other officers that, you know, all they wanna do is they're looking for, you know, people who commit violent crimes. So we try to, we try to gauge, you know, our personnel and do and try to, you know, get them the tools to do it. So we will continue to, you know, push them towards, you know, making sure that we're not always, that the big stuff does matter, but the small stuff does too. Copa White can contest that. Someday, I might send out five emails and people looking at me like, couldn't do that in one, but it's like, you know what I'm saying, like, you know, Council President, he might, you know, text me on Sunday when I'm at home, my kids about a parking problem. But, you know, seeing those people, so we, you know, we do it, try to address what we can, you know? Try to. We have a neighborhood that's done.
I was just gonna ask that too.
I think we have a manual meeting that we, certainly, we bring that up, it's like, it follows up deputies. So if one, if one of us comes to your meetings, I give you my card, you just let us know, I'm a railway fixer at Eastport.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
At Westport in Elston, so if you guys have a neighborhood, so I can, you know, again, I don't mind, you know, $10 to address some of those issues.
Memorial Day weekend, so.
I think that definitely will have, you know, have been, Chief Corrly, I mean, explaining why it is important to address this issue.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Yeah, no problem. It's a classic case of creep. Somebody saw somebody else doing it and then all of a sudden.
Suggestion for, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Because the fire department have kind of, they do, running around the neighborhoods all the time. You know, they may have ideas of what streets are the narrow ones to focus on.
That's true.
Good suggestion. Start him in the right direction. That's great. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts before we adjourn? Thanks to you all for coming and so we'll put this communication together, we'll share it with everybody and then we'll use and communicate with that with various methods of communication. And then once you have that inventory put together, then we'll reconvene. Thank you very much.